Okay. Noting the hour and the presence of a quorum, welcome everybody. I will call the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. As a reminder, members of the public are welcome to join us here at the Administration Building, or they can watch us on TV on Acton TV's YouTube site, which is found at the top of our agenda. As a reminder, as always, our meetings are being recorded, and they'll be posted on Acton TV's website at actontv.org. We do have an executive session tonight that will not be recorded or posted. So we did have a fairly short business meeting this evening where we're just going to go over a couple of items, and then we've got need for a fairly extensive executive session, which we'll get to towards the end of the public meeting. So first item here is public participation. Speakers are welcome to speak per our policy for up to three minutes, and they must be recognized by the Chair. Is there anybody in the public who is interested in speaking this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's update. Peter.
All right. Thank you, Adam, and hello, everyone. Welcome to the district, and you are sitting in one of our air-conditioned spaces. I will make sure I make note of that. I wanted to start out by some congratulations and giving a shout-out to one of our Conant 6th graders, Abijeh Potluri. He has been selected as the Times Kid Reporter for 2022-20, excuse me, 2023-24. I now know what school year it is, which is a great honor. He's going to get to go out and interview politicians, entertainers, and all sorts of people who are out there making history. So that's a great honor for Abijeh. He actually, I got to be interviewed by him during the pandemic, and he had a talk show and podcast that was just spreading good news. So he's a really amazing kid, and we're just thrilled for him for that opportunity. I also made reference to the air conditioning in here, but in all seriousness, I really just want to make sure I thank all of our staff and students, particularly in those schools without air conditioning. So we're fortunate that the majority of our schools have full air conditioning now. But Conant does not, Blanchard does not, and the Junior High does not. And we are seeing temperature readings in classrooms well above 80 degrees now. And a healthy environment is considered below 80 degrees, and above 80, it's really challenging. So I was in some classrooms at Blanchard yesterday. I was in some classrooms at the Junior High and the high school where we had a rooftop unit fail today, and I was communicating with the Conant principal, and it's pretty challenging in some of these rooms. I expect that to continue into tomorrow. We are open because we also know a lot of our families depend on us to be open. And for some of our students, it's the safest place that they're going to be. So we need to continue to do that if it's at all safe to be open. But I know it's really challenging for staff to teach and for kids to learn, so we're just trying to do our best. Want to give just a thanks to our nurses and give a little public service message for nurses. There's been a lot of publicity recently around an increase in COVID-19 cases. We are not mandating any testing or tracking case numbers. We're not doing that now. We do request that if kids are sick, please keep them home. That's just a basic, it's always been that way at school. We just don't, we're not here for, we can't do sick kids. So if kids are experiencing symptoms, please stay home. That's really important, and we just want to make sure we're reminding families that DPH continues to require and mandate a five-day isolation period and masking for COVID-positive cases. So we're going to send that public service message out to everyone, but we are seeing a lot of sick kids coming into school and then having to be tested and go home with COVID. So please keep students home. The rest of this is going to be a little bit more fun of an update, and I'm going to play a couple of videos for you. So this first one, while I'm pulling it up, I wanted to give you a little bit of a back-to-school update, but they say a picture is worth 1,000 words, so rather than me just talking about back-to-school, I thought I'd just show you a handful of pictures from across the district. That was it, short and sweet. As you can see, these pictures were not taken today or yesterday. Full disclaimer. The other update I have for you is another, I'm actually going to show you two videos. As we launched the Acton-Boxborough Resource Center, we've actually partnered with an animator and a video producer named Dave Cartoon. He's out of Sudbury, Massachusetts, and he started partnering with school districts to work to explain educational topics to members in the community in a way that can be understood and can live on over periods of time. So we wanted to introduce our community to the Resource Center and in a format that could be pushed out in all sorts of media, social media applications, websites, newsletters, things like that. So he's created a video. I'm going to play the English version for you tonight, but we actually have members of our community, some families, and high school students reading this in the seven primary languages that our district speak. So it will be available in people's native languages as well. So we're actually, I'm just going to play you a snippet of the Portuguese version as well, just to give you a flavor for how that works.
Welcome to the Acton-Boxborough Schools. You are an essential part of your student's journey in Acton-Boxborough Regional School District. We need you, your student needs you, and we need to develop a strong partnership together to support your student in their educational journey. Our partnership starts at the Acton-Boxborough Resource Center. Located at 15 Charter Road in Acton, our staff want to personally welcome you and your family into our schools and our community. Whether you are new to our community or have lived here many years, the Resource Center is here for every family in Acton-Boxborough. We are here to register your student for school, share information, and connect you with resources in our community to meet any needs you may have. We can connect you with a volunteer who speaks your native language, who can help you learn about our community and your student's school, and guide you to communicate with your student's teacher and school. The more we communicate together, the more your student will grow, learn faster, and be more successful in school. Here are the other ways we can support your family and our students at the center. If your student is learning English, we will assess their English language level and provide translation services to you. We offer English-language conversation groups for families and caregivers at the Resource Center to help you practice English. We can help your family access health care. We also offer support to find housing, employment, and transportation outside of school. And our Resource Center can connect you to events and activities for children and families in our community, which strengthen our connections to each other. The Acton-Boxborough Resource Center is open Monday through Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. and by appointment. You can see a complete guide to all community resources for families in Acton-Boxborough by clicking on this link. These are the ways we're here to support you, your family, and your student. We are here for you. We want to connect with you one-to-one to learn about your family, your student, and how we can grow and be successful together. Please visit us at the Resource Center, call us at this number, or click this link to email us, and we will contact you.
And now I'll just play a little bit of the Portuguese version of this.
Bem-vindas escolas de Acton-Boxborough. Você é uma parte essencial da jornada de seu aluno no Distrito Escolar Regional de Acton-Boxborough. Precisamos de você, seu aluno precisa de você, e precisamos desenvolver uma parceria sólida para apoiar seu aluno em sua jornada educacional. Nossa parceria começa no Centro de Recursos de Acton-Boxborough. Localizado no número 15 da Charter Road in Acton, nossa equipe quer dar as boas-vindas.
Great, and so I think you get the idea there. So again, we're doing this in seven languages, where you can hear the audio in seven languages, and then it will have subtitles in other languages as well for all the versions, so that if someone were hearing impaired, they could still access the video in whatever language they needed to. So we're really thrilled to have done this. I want to give a lot of credit, as with all of the welcome center work. Jen Faber has done significant work on this with the animator around developing a script, thinking about reaching out to community members and students to involve them in the process. I want to thank United Way for the partnership around this as well, because they've been instrumental in also connecting us with more volunteers to help out. So we have our grand opening next Wednesday afternoon. Hopefully, you've all received the invitation, and if you're around, it would be great to have you. We have Representative Cataldo, Representative Senna, and Senator Eldridge all coming to be able to say a few words, and we're just really thrilled to do the grand opening and get this thing going. Happy to take any questions, but that is the superintendent update for tonight.
Thank you, Peter. I have one quick question of the committee here. Can I see a show of hands of those people who are planning on attending the opening ceremony?
I'm sorry, when exactly is it?
It is next Wednesday, the 12th at 3:30. So I just want to see, show of hands. I want to...
I'm in the same thing. I figure my daughter are four, but...
I'm asking only because we might need to post that there'll be a quorum of the committee there. Okay. So based on everybody who's planning, we'll make sure that we just post, just in case.
I don't think you're planning to deliberate any business. You can, if you go to a community event together, I think that's okay.
Yeah, that's outside.
Is it? Because Boxborough just posted for the Select Board meeting at a...
That's different than a community...
A ribbon-cutting. Yeah?
No, because there's no school committee meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
Sorry, there's a special exception for things like that. Yeah. So we don't need to.
Just want to make sure we're covered, because a number of us will be there altogether.
Nobody should talk about anything that's in front of us. Yeah, just smile and watch.
And thank the representatives for showing up. Okay. Great. Thank you. Sorry. Questions or comments for Peter?
I thought it was exceptional.
Vikram, can you just wait? I want to make sure that I check the room, and I want to acknowledge everyone first. All right, go ahead.
I just want to say I thought it's exceptional. It's nice to see multilingual things coming up, that there are going to be seven languages and even more that are subtitled. It's very impressive. Just, you didn't have just white people or silhouettes of white people sort of across the spectrum, I thought. It was very good and very welcoming.
Did the person who narrated the Portuguese version, AB's staff?
I think that was one of our staff members, yes. Who was the... Oh, that was Gabby over at McTee. Yeah. Yeah, but what's cool is we also have some of our high school students narrating some of this, so I'm excited to give them that opportunity. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Wonderful. Thanks, Peter. As we move on to our ongoing business, I do want to just take a moment to mention for the committee and for the public when they watch this after the fact, that we are changing a bit the way we're posting our agendas and packets. It gets to be a little bit unwieldy to have 100-plus-page PDF as part of our packet. So what we're doing now is creating individual PDFs for each of the agenda items, hosting them on our website, and then just providing a link to those items in your agenda. So you'll see now that the packet and the agenda are one item. Happy to take feedback from both committee members and community members who use the packet and look through it to try and make this better. We're trying to make it more accessible, both for the committee members when we're here in the building, but also for the staff who are preparing all of this information, because at some point, someone has to take all 100 of those pages and combine them into one PDF. So that's just a note I wanted to give everybody. Please, if you do have some comments or feedback, feel free to email Peter and myself about that. So you can see that our next item on our ongoing business is the second read and vote for the school committee, sorry, the school district and superintendent goals. The school committee goals, I don't think we're voting, we just sort of discussed those. So I'm happy to hand it over to Peter to give us sort of an update on where you are in the district and superintendent goals.
Sure, great. So first, all of this information is in your packet, and what I did is with the district goals, I highlighted the information that had changed based on some of the feedback from the committee members. So to those of you who sent in some feedback, thank you very much for doing that. It was really insightful and helped me refine some of what we were trying to present. Just to go through, one of the big changes was to include, right at the top, the mission, vision, values, and beliefs of the school district. And in looking at the values, excuse me, the beliefs, we really thought, as we reaffirmed last year, our commitment to students who come from, whether they're in the LGBTQ+ community or other communities, we actually thought that was a really explicit need to call out. That was some feedback from committee members, so we added that in. So thank you for seeing that and bringing that to our attention. And then, I think, another major change that we made, based on this, was we really thought about, again, based on some of your feedback, and I got this from a few members, was that the high school course leveling is not just equity work, it's actually academic work. And it's part of a continuum of work that starts at our elementary schools and has to actually continue at the high school. And the whole reason we're doing MTSS at our elementary schools is to expand opportunities and access for students. The high school course leveling is the outcome and product of a lot of that work, and we wanted to make sure that our community understood that this is an academic process. You know, I think what has been so nice, and I actually got contacted by WGBH about rankings, and I said, "Oh, did rankings come out?" And they said, "Yes." "AB improved a lot." And I said, "Oh, what ranking are you looking at, and what are we ranked?" And he said, "So you don't really pay attention to that." I said, "I do not. I don't find any value in that." But he said, "Well, you improved significantly in the UNAS News and World Report rankings. What are you most proud of?" And I actually said, "Well, to be honest, what I'm most proud of is we've done a lot of work to expand opportunities for kids and think about equity across all of our schools over the last five to six years." And the fact that we're not only not seeing decline, but we're continuing to improve as a school district is really a testament that you can provide equitable opportunities for kids and do it at a really, really high level. And I think that's an important message for our community to understand. So I think it was very fitting to actually move the high school course leveling goal into the same goal around MTSS. And what I should have also highlighted, it wasn't just MTSS, it was MTSS in order to expand opportunities and access. So we rephrased that a little bit as well. So you'll see that change. Couple other minor things, just when we list IST, just spelling out Instructional Support Team for the first time, so people know what that is. Those were the big, significant changes. There was some other good feedback that came in too around thinking about, what are some of the big outcomes we want around SEL and other areas? But that was a bigger conversation than a two-week conversation, and quite honestly, probably a conversation that we want to have with school committee, because as kind of the board, you're really intimately involved in setting what you want to see for those benchmarks. And before just the staff commits to kind of big data points that we want to look at, that's really a dialogue we want to have together. So we didn't include that in here, but I wanted to recognize that that was a point of feedback as well. So I'm happy to take any other questions, but I think I got highlighted, most of the big changes.
Thanks, Peter. Questions? Comments? Go ahead.
Just because I had to look it up, we were number nine.
What was that?
I said, "Just because I had to look it up, we're number nine on the list."
I think Peter's comment still stands. Which list? By whose accounting?
Yeah.
All right. So with that, I will take a motion to approve the district goals for 2023-2024.
Second. So moved. Second.
Okay. So Yan Chen moved, and Tori seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you all. Next is our vote to amend our regional school district budget. There is a memo in our packet. We talked about this a bit at our previous meeting. Do we have more to discuss? Sherry, want to give us an update, or Peter, want to give us any additional information?
Sherry, do you want to give just a really high-level update?
So at the previous meeting on August 24th, we had given you a presentation about something we had found a duplicate entry on our line items that created a deficit for FY '24 in the amount of $425,000. In that packet, we had suggested a solution to it. So tonight, what we're looking for is a vote from the committee to amend the appropriation This will not affect any of the assessments for either one of the towns, and our solution was we're getting additional Chapter 70 revenue money, and we're getting additional transportation revenue money, and through attrition, we were able to not backfill a position in approximately $100,000. So it will not change anything. It will change the outlook of our base for FY '25, though. So I don't know if you need me to read this whole motion or whether you guys need to read it.
We'll need one of the committee members to read the whole motion. You don't need to read it. Thank you.
And I will also just add for everyone, as we were entering into this process prior to the last meeting, we made sure that we emailed this very specifically, that we were discussing this to both Select Boards and both Finance Committees, and then we also discussed this at ALG today to make sure we were being transparent.
Thank you, Peter. All right. Any questions or comments on this? Vikram.
You said that it would affect the fiscal year '25. Could you explain how it would?
It changes our base of our budget before we even start looking at '25. So even though it didn't affect the assessments for this year because we have additional revenue, our base becomes higher. So when we're looking to create the numbers for FY '25, we start at a higher beginning than we did when we made the original assessments.
So is that a bad thing or a good thing? Or how would that, I mean, how does that play out ultimately?
I mean... It's a challenge that's going to have to be overcome in the budget process. I wouldn't call it bad or good necessarily. I mean, you know, essentially, if we had known about this before passing the budget, we probably would have had to make additional reductions. So as it stands right now, we have those teachers for this year. What it does mean is we're going to have to find $400,000 that we have to deal with in the next budget cycle beyond what we would be dealing with anyway.
So is that a significant, a major, or a minor hurdle?
I always think in this, with $100 million budget, to me, it becomes more and more significant the more zeros you add. So, you know, three zeros is tough, four is doable in a district our size. When you get to five and six, those are significant numbers. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the perspective, we put it under last meeting, Vikram, was that our budget increased originally by 2.91%, and that resulted in percentages for the two towns that were acceptable for their assessments and their increases. Now, our budget will essentially go up by 3.23%, but we can't raise that base for the assessments to the towns. They're going to still be limited to their 2.5%, 3%. And so there's a bigger gap that we'll have to close because we can't assess that additional $400,000 to the towns for next year. That's the challenge that will, that is the incremental challenge we're facing.
So in your opinion, do you feel that's a valid hurdle to have to overcome?
I don't have an opinion yet because we haven't really looked at budget planning for this year, and we don't know the rest of the calculus around what the budget looks like, what the towns are putting forward, what our additional needs are.
Yeah, I'll be really transparent. I think it's going to present a challenge for us in the next budget cycle, because it's not going to be the only driver that we have to contend with. We're still going to have to contend with health insurance. That's going to be incredibly challenging. We're going to have to contend with continued increases in post-employment insurance benefits in Middlesex County retirement. And then, to be honest, too, we've had a significant number of move-ins over the summer that have some legally required services that we've had to provide, where we've had to increase special education costs probably to the tune of $700,000 since we passed the budget. And that's being funded out of Circuit Breaker, which is why it's there. But if the kids aren't leaving, the costs are still going to stay, and we're going to have to figure out how to navigate it. So I think it's, the challenge we have isn't any one issue. It's kind of the death-by-a-thousand-cuts strategy that is really making it hard for us.
So I guess really my question then becomes, is it worth doing this to overcome this particular hurdle? Is that a smaller hurdle, or will the future hurdle be larger? I mean, is there a better way to address things now that would mitigate the further future hurdle?
I don't think so, because quite honestly, I think the challenge we have in doing this right close to the beginning of school and as we're starting school, all of those teachers are in classrooms with students. And the last thing we want to do now, if we have the money now, we want to continue to provide the educational services for them. I mean, we could make $400,000 worth of reductions and not have to do the other 400 next year, but it's still going to be a problem for us. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Would someone like to read the very detailed motion in this packet item, please?
I, okay, I'll volunteer. Is this the amended regional school district budget? 3B? I'm getting no preview available. File is in owner's trash when I click the link. If you have it, I can read it.
Oh, I can just read it. That's fine.
Here I have it.
I move that the committee amend the budget of the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District for the fiscal year July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, as presented in the amount of $106,224,413, which is reduced by estimated receipts and available funds in the following amounts. Anticipated Chapter 78 in the amount of $15,942,931. Anticipated state transportation aid in the amount of $2,417,425. Anticipated state charter school aid in the amount of $150,000. Anticipated Medicaid reimbursement of $250,000. Anticipated investment earnings of $300,000. Estimated miscellaneous revenues of $25,000. And transfers from the following district reserves. Excess and deficiency fund in the amount of $1,375,000. Capital stabilization fund in the amount of $150,000.
Lila seconded that. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you all. Okay. Next item here is the school committee communication goal update. Right? Yes. So we discussed at our previous meeting the goal of the committee. Everybody was on board with that. I shared that with you all and asked you all to come back with some ideas of which of those four bullet points you'd be willing to participate in. For those who did send me some information, thank you very much. For those who haven't yet, hard to get started on our goal if we don't have everyone signed up to do some stuff on the goal. So there are four main categories. Providing regular communication and outreach, hosting some open listening sessions and workshops, participation at school events and visits, and the fourth was providing some transparency and decision rationale. So please, for those of you who haven't sent me anything yet, I would say that we're looking for people to support items two, three, and four primarily at this point. And considering our goal around both having some listening sessions and participating in events, I did notice that the Oktoberfest is planned for September 30th. So I'm going to do some research to see if we can't get ourselves a table there, and then I might be looking at our next meeting to see if some folks want to help sit and say hi to community members for a couple hours during the Oktoberfest on September 30th. So if your calendar's free, I might be reaching out. So that's the update on our school committee communication goal. We're going to move on to our consent agenda. As a reminder, those items on the consent agenda, oh, what's this text here? We only have one item, so we don't even need to go through the consent agenda thing. We've got one item, which is the approval of our workshop meeting minutes and our meeting minutes of 8/24/2023. Is there anybody who wishes to make a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
That was Liz, seconded by Ginny. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? None. We are on to statement of warrants. Who's got that PDF open and wants to read all the numbers?
That could be me.
Vikram's ready.
Vikram's ready. All right, turn your mic on.
From the very beginning?
Yeah.
Members? Okay. Recommended motion wording. Don't start there? All right, I'm a newbie. Come on, give me a little slack here. I move that the school committee vote to approve that the below-listed warrants totaling The AP vendor warrants are as follows. 24-004A dated 8/17/2023 in the amount of $703,778.53. 24-004B dated 8/24/2023 in the amount of $1,605,702.67. 24-005A dated 8/31/2023 in the amount of $1,496,139.7. Payroll vendor warrant is as follows. 24-004PR dated 8/24/2023 in the amount of $239,468.71. The payroll warrant is follows. P2404 dated 8/24/2023 in the amount of $663,786.18.
Second.
Thank you, Vikram and Liz. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you. So, we have need for an executive session to be convened under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the committee. Would someone like to move to go into executive session for that purpose?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that was moved by Vikram, seconded by Tori. This has to be a roll-call vote, so we will start with Lila. Ginny.
Aye.
Tori.
Aye.
Becca.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Liz.
Aye.
Vikram.
Aye.
Yan Shin.
Aye.
And Lakshmi.
Aye.
All right, and we also have need to go, a second need for an executive session to be convened under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. The personnel would be the superintendent, to be very clear. The committee will not return to open session following executive session, so would someone like to move to go into executive session for our second purpose?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so Yan Shin moved, and Lila seconded. Another round around the room. Lila.
Aye.
Ginny.
Aye.
Tori.
Aye.
Becca.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Liz.
Aye.
Vikram.
Aye.
Yan Shin.
Aye.
Lakshmi.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you very much. As a reminder, we will not return to open session. Thank you for those who came to visit us this evening.